Okay, welcome everyone. I'll call this February 25th, 2025 meeting of council to order at 6:00 PM. This meeting will be held in a hybrid manner where members of council, staff, and the public can participate electronically. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded and will be available on the township website. Notice is hereby provided that under the authority of the Municipal Act 2001 and in accordance with Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, that all information attained is considered part of the public record. All rules apply to the meeting as if everyone is attending in person. And if there is a problem with the technology impacting the proceedings of a meeting, the meeting may be recessed. So at this time, I would ask anyone who can to stand for the National Anthem. We acknowledge that we are being hosted on the ancestral lands of the Haudenosaunee, Mississauga, and Omaaau Wannanee people. We acknowledge and welcome the presence of all indigenous people, including the Métis, Inuit, and other First Nations from across this vast land who also makes this place home. The lands we are on today are recognized in the Tuero Wampano' Dish with One Spoon Treaty, Treaty 27, and the Crawford Purchase. So next up is a confirmation of agenda. Could I have someone make a motion? Deputy Mayor?
I move that the agenda of the February 25th, 2025 meeting of council be confirmed as circulated.
So moved, seconded by Council Enos. Any updates, any changes? Call a question on favor. Motion is passed. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof for this evening's meeting? Council Broderick?
Your worship, I'd like to declare a conflict on item 11-3 Lakeside Phase 8 Stage 2, and I've submitted the documentation.
Thank you. Any other declarations this evening? Council Boudrick?
I have two actually. One would be on the consent agenda, 15.5 Resolution GC-2025-7. And the other would be on the Committee of the Whole for SR2856.
Okay. Thank you. Any other declarations this evening? Seeing none? I'm just going to... Sorry, Council Boudrick? I just wanted to mark my agenda here so when we get there, I don't forget it. -7, okay. Thank you. So there was no closed session. And we do have presentations this evening, and I would call the CIO up to provide us with the information.
Thank you, worship members of council. It gives me great pleasure again to be able to present CMM Awards Certified Municipal Manager Awards to two more staff tonight. The Certified Municipal Manager Certificate is an accredited recognition of all education and work experience. Over 2,800 local government administrators hold one of four levels of the CMM designations across 30 professions and across all levels of staff. Please join me this evening in congratulating Gorev Sharma on receiving his CMM Level 3 designation and Andrew Hooper on receiving the CMM Level 2 designation.
Congratulations to both of you. And it's always encouraging when staff continue to expand their knowledge and be able to advance themselves with the township as well. Well done. Thank you. Okay, so the next one up is open forum. So, open forum, we set aside 15 minutes for items to be disc... Information to be presented to council on items that are within the agenda. Each member has three minutes to speak. And we do have a couple people, and I have a piece of paper here somewhere. There we go. Marcia Eldridge and Megan Richmond. And if you could just come forward at the front table here, just sit where there's a mic. If you push the button, the light will come on, and you can... That way, it will be broadcast as well. If you can provide us with your information, that would be great.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here today. I am Megan Richmond, and I am here on behalf of the Loyalist Business Association. It is a non-for-profit incorporated. We are run by strictly volunteers. We have just recently onboarded two new directors and kind of relieved another one at the same time. We've been moving forward with a big... Well, we just had a big project, and we wanted to extend a sincere thank you to all of you because we did utilize the renewable grant two years ago and got a $10,000 grant where we were able to build an online directory that houses over about 200 businesses strictly within the Loyalist Township. And this does include members of our association, but it also includes other businesses just to keep the growth of the community and the knowledge of what's out there for everyone. That being said, we are applying for another grant tonight, and we hope that you'll help us out again. The money that we're raising tonight is going to go to a branded booth where we can build exposure within the community and residents and specifically target the people that live in the community and let them know that we're here, trying to show them what's available, connect small businesses to the community. We're working with the township. We've met with Trevor to discuss welcome packages and distribution throughout the township to new residents. We're looking into possibly maybe setting up some type of town hall with you guys in the future where we can connect and bring our local businesses to you. We have lots in the mix as well as our website. We're going to markets actively. We've been participating in the trunk or treat for the last three years, building brand awareness, and we want to continue doing that. So with that being said, Marcia, do you have any... Yep. Well, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. So that was all that had signed up. I've just... I'll just follow the normal format. I'll ask in chambers if anyone wishes to speak during open forum, at which time you can come up. And then I'll go to the virtual audience as well. So in chambers, if there's anyone that wishes to speak to council through the open forum, please come forward, and you can provide your information to us. Can you just push the button again? There we go.
There, thank you. Megan Richmond coming back to the microphone tonight. I am actually here with another hat on. I belong to the Odessa Parent Advisory Committee for Odessa Public School, and we're applying for the grant to build a community within our school community here in Odessa. We held a fun fair last year, and we only hope to make it bigger and better this year. We've had an increase in students, so much so that we've moved the sevens and eights into the high school, and we really want to reach the broader community, their grandparents, bring them all in, and show them what this little area is all about. So again, I'm here to spout that. So thank you again for your time, everybody.
Thank you. Like so many of us, always wear two hats, right? Is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to speak tonight through open forum? Seeing none, I'll go to the virtual audience. If there's someone in the virtual audience who wishes to speak this evening through open forum, please use the raised hand feature, and we will bring you into the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
None? Very good. So that concludes the open forum. There's no delegations? Items for consideration? Housing Accelerator Fund Work Plan. Welcome. Do you have any additional information to share at this time, or just here for questions?
Nothing to add, your worship, just here to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. So council, we have a report with recommendation. Would someone like to put a recommendation or a motion on the floor? Council Broderick?
Thank you, worship. I would recommend that the report from the Corporate Services Strategy and Innovation Department dated February 11th, 2025, Re-Housing Accelerator Fund Work Plan be received and that that Housing Accelerator Fund be used to fund the following in 2025: Actual staff time spent on Housing Accelerator Fund initiatives in 2025 to a maximum of $200,000 and up to $171,000 in expenses for the Loyalist Link Transit Service. I'll be really brief. It's an exciting opportunity, and I know that the development community is excited probably... I can't speak for them, but they're interested in working with us. And I know that the Loyalist Link is showing tremendous possibility, and I think it's a great way to continue, especially that Loyalist Link Transit Service.
Thank you. Seconder? Other members? Seeing none? Call a question on favor. Motion is passed. Thank you. Lakeside Gardens Stages 3 and 4, request to remove holding symbol. You got caught before you were sitting down. Welcome. Is there any additional information on this item?
No, nothing further, your worship.
Okay. Again, we do have a recommendation. Would someone like to put a motion on the floor for us? Council Willis?
I move that the report from the Development Services Division, February 25th, 2025, read D14-007-2024, Lakeside Gardens Stages 3 and 4, request to remove holding symbol be received and that bylaw 2025-8 being a bylaw to remove the holding symbol with respect to parts lot... Part of lots 35 and 36, concession 1 and part of block D on registered plan 1081 be enacted and passed.
So moved. Do we have a seconder? Council Enos? Any comments from the mover? Seconder? Other members? Call a question on favor. Motion is passed. The next, and Council Broderick has declared the conflict of interest. Lakeside's... Lakeside Phase 8 Stage 2, request to remove holding symbol. Any additional information on this one?
No, nothing further, your worship.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I move that the report from the Development Services Division, February 25th, 2025, read D14-001-2025, Lakeside Phase 8 Stage 2, request to remove holding symbol be received and two, that bylaw 2025-9 being a bylaw to remove the holding symbol with respect to part of lot 35, concession 1, Part 1, on Plan 29R11220, except registered plan 29M-72 be enacted and passed.
So moved. Seconded by Council Boudrick? Excuse me. Any comments from the mover? Seconder? Other members? Seeing none? Call a question on favor. Motion is passed. Thank you, Council Boudrick. So at this time, we would entertain a recommendation to go into Committee of the Whole. It's someone... Council Boudrick?
So moved.
The council now resolved it into the Committee of the Whole. Moved, seconded by the deputy mayor. All in favor? Motion is passed. Just take a minute.
...of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Councilor Boudrick? As stated earlier, SR2856. Anyone else? Seeing none? Items for consideration? Human Resources Policies, 13.31. Have our Human Resources Manager, Ms. Wood, please proceed.
Thank you. Nothing more to add to this unless committee has questions.
This is Committee of the Whole, so I'll entertain questions prior to seeking a motion. Are there any questions? Then I would seek a motion. Councilor Willis?
I move that the report from Human... From the Human Resources Department dated February 25th, 2025, Re-Human Resources Policies be received, two, that council approve the draft Flexible Work Arrangements Policy, the Volunteering Time Off Policy, and the Non-Union Compensation Administration Policy; and three, that the following policies be repealed: Compensation for staff appointed on an acting basis, Council Minute Number 2013.25.40; Annual Economic Increase Non-Union Policy, Council Minute .2013.3.23; Non-Union Salary Administration Policy, Council Minute .2013.28.20; and d, the Compensation Policy for Part-Time Employees, Council Minute Number 2015.12.
So moved. Seconder? Councilor Broderick? Any further comments from either the mover or seconder? Anyone else? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Now we come to 13.3.2, New Policy Framework. And the Clerk's Division is coming up.
Good evening, committee. We do have a short presentation that I will pull up, giving a brief overview of the work that has been completed thus far for this proposed new policy framework. Okay. So this is just an overview of this proposed policy framework. So currently in the township, there is no standardized process for managing policies and those related documents to them. Because of this, there has been some uncertainty around what policy documents exist and what their status is. Right now, policy documents are being managed by their respective divisions. So what is a policy framework? So this framework is used to guide staff when drafting reviewing policy documents. This includes categorizing documents between what is a policy, procedure, guideline, work instruction, et cetera. It establishes approval requirements, processes, and provides for the use of standard templates across the township. It also creates a filing and tracking system to provide consistent review schedules. So why do we need a framework? So a framework would provide for guidance and ensure that all matters are approached in an accountable and transparent manner with an emphasis on openness, equity, performance, outcomes, and fiscal responsibility. With the township's continuing growth, an overarching policy framework with a central administrator would help guide decision-making along with ensure there are clearly defined policy tools that will ensure decision-making is consistent for internal and external stakeholders. A policy framework also helps meet compliance requirements and operational outcomes along with council strategic plan initiatives under organizational effectiveness. So with that, there are a few different types of policy documents under this proposed framework and their approval authority. So those are policies, procedures, guidelines, and work instructions. And further to that, there's two types of policies. So there's corporate policy and administrative policy. And each document has a corresponding proposed approval authority. So corporate policies affect external stakeholders and the organization as a whole with council as a proposed approval authority. This includes any policy that would affect the public or external stakeholders that's required by legislation or relates to financial or budget impacts to the township. Examples could be... Or include the code of conduct for members of council and local boards, the community grants policy, accessible customer service and procurement policy. Administrative policies include employee relations and certain department management with the CIO as a proposed approval authority. Examples include electronic billing reports policy, ascent sensitivity policy, retention of electronic mail policy, retirement age policy, et cetera. Procedures are prescribed mandatory tasks, processes, and responsibilities in order to implement a policy with relevant department directors as an approval authority. And lastly, there's guidelines, which are documents that set out good practices to follow, and are discretionary and work instructions which are used to additionally support policy documents. So these would include templates, checklists, et cetera, and these are proposed to have the division managers as approval authority. So in regards to a review process, the Clerk's Division will provide annual reports to each division in the township indicating policies to be reviewed. The proposed framework requires policy documents to be reviewed every five years unless prescribed by legislation. The approval process of policies being reviewed will depend on the changes required and whether it's considered a major amendment, administrative amendment, or a no-change review as outlined in the proposed framework. All approved policy documents will be managed and tracked by the Clerk's Division, and the corporate drive will hold all PDF versions of approved policy documents, and any policies that affect external stakeholders will be uploaded to the township's webpage. So Phase 1 of this township policy review... So during this phase, the Clerk's Division created an inventory of all known policy documents within the township and drafted a new proposed policy framework and the associated templates. The Clerk's Division staff met with directors and managers from each division and provided them with the current inventory and proposed framework. During these meetings, staff discussed policies to be retained, repealed, amended in the future, and policies that are required by legislation. Following these meetings, 152 of the 362 identified policies were identified to be repealed, and a proposed framework and list of policies to be repealed were prepared for council's consideration. So Phase 2. So if approved, the Clerk's Division staff would begin Phase 2 of the township policy review process and finalize an updated policy inventory of current township policies and provide directors and managers with training and an overview of the policy framework repository and document templates. Divisions could then begin updating existing policies identified as needing to be reviewed and amended. Thank you.
Thank you. For anybody that's out there who's read the report, it's a lot of work that's gone into this. A lot of review. And just to frame our discussion here, this is a very welcome policy. It's been a long time coming, and we're... I'm sure I speak for council in saying we're glad to... Glad to see it and have a robust discussion. You know, policy is the nature of what we do. It's extremely important. And so, you know, this process really amplifies and augments the importance of policy writ large. And so hopefully, we'll have a good discussion tonight. So I'll turn it over to the committee for questions, first of all, if there are any questions of clarification or... Yep, Council Broderick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just four or five slides back, there was a line, something along the lines of, "May inform council." Is that... Can you find that again, or...?
Absolutely. One second.
Yep, no hurry. But I'll just sort of digress in a sense. It's great to see that, because as you look through, there's so many things and... From my experience in life anyways, sometimes when there's less, you... when there's less, you get more out of it than having 362 or 52. And I'm sure as you go through the process, there'll still be more paring down.
Through you, your chair, to Counsel Proderick. So that line was in regards to the review process. So it would be, that's referring to, as with the proposed framework, it has council being the approval authority for corporate policies. So corporate policies that have major amendments would be brought to council.
Okay. I just didn't, like, when you see "may," it sort of leaves it open. When I look at Attachment 2, and it lists all the policies, and there's lots of them there that maybe didn't survive the cut, and we go back, you know, even looking right at the top down to 1989, the world's changed a bit since then. How long is the process going to get sober on a five-year cycle? Are we looking at a huge backlog, or is that something you haven't even looked at yet?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counsel Proderick's question. This would be left up to the division managers and directors to dictate to their staff. It is a lot of work, and like Gillian mentioned, there are about 210 policies that are left over to review, and council is going to start seeing those policies, if they're corporate policies, come forward, similar to what you saw with the Human Resources Policy Report. You know, one policy that consolidates maybe three or four policies together and then requests council to repeal the old ones.
And if I may, just one last one, and I'm not picking on the Amherst Island Ferry Services, but it's good to see that, you know, there's a policy on to ensure efficient cleaning schedule for ferry service. So that's eliminated, but anything that comes out of, you know, that's really the department, right? Like, I think there's so many policies in there that, oh, I would assume you're going to clean the ferry, you know, like, you don't need a policy on it. But anyway, and then the day-to-day, so the administrative policies or whatever, that's more of the day-to-day working of the organization, whether it's management or the CAO or whatever. Okay, thank you.
Other members. Counsel Willis.
Thank you. Through the chair, could you expand upon the kind of line of reasoning for removing council from the approval process for the administrative policies?
So through the chair to Counsel Willis. So this option is being proposed as it ensures that the documents are being reviewed and approved in a manner that still holds the accountability and transparency that the township wants to provide, but bringing a potentially more efficient manner in approving and implementing policies depending on the governance of them. So in regards to administrative policies, they're more for the day-to-day operations. And then the corporate policies are for, it affects the public and the township governance as a whole. So the reasoning for administrative policies to potentially be approved by the CAO would just help streamline process and allow council to focus on some of the bigger picture items. And then the CAO could approve policies for that are, that affect just the day-to-day operation.
So I'll give a follow-up question to that, I'm sure, because I, in discussions with staff earlier today, you know, I think that probably is, that one piece is a bit of an initial stumbling block perhaps for council. I mean, obviously, in the traditional or the conventional way in which, you know, everybody staying in their lanes is dictated or determined in municipal politics, you know, staff is operation and council's policy. So anything to do with policy usually comes to council. And I think everybody probably, you know, appreciates, you know, it creating efficiency. I don't think anybody up here is probably opposed to that. I think they're probably, and this is where you can maybe expand a little more on what kinds of administrative policies you have envisioned as being efficient, and then also what, you know, in terms of the accountability and transparency that everybody still expects, that you referred to, what, you know, what can we, what can we do to ensure that, you know, council's ultimate oversight isn't, you know, undermined? Obviously, the public expects council to, you know, to have, to oversight and do their due diligence. So how, you know, how can everybody be happy in this situation?
So to the chair, to answer that, so the first component there, like, what are the administrative policies that would potentially be for the CAO approval? So that's for, like, that would be for, like, human resources policies as they affect, you know, like, staffing and employee relations, IT policies in regards to, you know, password protection, computer monitoring, et cetera. Again, also just other day-to-day operations within the township. So how different programs are run, just that only affect the internal staff. And in regards to how we can still have that council oversight, there definitely could be some other options. In regards to, you know, we could have all policies being reported out onto the township webpage. We can also offer for reporting to be brought to council, you know, on an annual basis in regards to which policies have been approved by the CAO in that year.
Thank you. Yep, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You just answered my first question. Just, I think if it's reported out, I'd like to see it reported out to council. At the beginning, there may be a number of them. After the initial cleanup, they'd probably be fairly rare, so annual or whatever. I think that just keeps council aware as well, so that we can answer questions and everything, too. So I like that. I do have one other question. In the repealed section, Attachment 3, a lot of the items, the note is, these are procedures. So they'll go from a policy to a procedure. I just wanted to ensure the continuity going from a policy to a procedure, what steps would be taken so that we aren't left without either one.
Through the chair to Mr. Mayor. So for that, so with this proposed new framework, it develops different types of policy document names. So as we went through, there's the policy document, a procedure document, guidelines, et cetera. So with this, so we're asking that these policies be repealed as titled "a policy," and then they will be retained and still active as a procedure under this new framework, so that township staff and departments still have these procedures in place for use.
Other members. Counsel Proderick.
I was going to save this, but maybe, I think the example you used for human resources is a good one, because I don't think, in my personal opinion, council really needs to have anything to do with that. And I think, you know, there's obviously a CAO that's hired to do a job in human resources people, and I'm always leery of something that we get involved with in terms of a hiring situation or the other end of the scale, because I think that's really not our place.
Counsel Willis.
It's a comment, not a question, but I beg to differ, because the buck stops here. We're elected to represent the township and the interests of the township, and an HR policy is something I think we should be interested in, how people are being treated, what policies are applying to them. An IT policy, we can absolve ourselves of the responsibility of that until there's a cyber attack and our taxpayers' information is violated. So I am very concerned that council would step back from our responsibility to approve policy. I would be uncomfortable with a once-annual list of policies that have been determined on our behalf. I could see an administrative policy coming to council on the consent agenda, so that it doesn't take a lot of time within the agenda on the meeting, but I still think that council needs to approve policy.
Other comments? The mayor looks like he's thinking.
I am. It hurts. I understand what Counsel Willis is saying. I guess where I'm, my thoughts on it are, you're right, ultimately, the buck stops here. I'm just looking at it. I still believe that if there was a policy that was going to be drafted or amended, and again, we'll take the HR, just because that was mentioned, if there was going to be significant changes, such as what we had just previously, that would come to council anyway. It would be more the day-to-day stuff with policy, HR policies and updates that may be, as legislation changes. I think if there were, the biggest thing with HR pay and everything, that would be a budget item, which would go through council, and other major changes, and I'm just thinking what we just did there, where, you know, we were looking at being able to volunteer a day a year, things like that. Anything that would have a budgetary implication or a significant change would come to council anyway, or at least, I know in the past, and there's been items that have been worked on, and the CAO and I talk about it, and there's some times where it really didn't need, didn't need to come to council legislatively, but I looked at it and went, that could end up being a political item, or put it on to council to make the decision. You know, that's where, that way, it's in the public and council has made the decision. And I guess I'm looking at it, that there are a lot of things that probably could be taken care of just administratively. The bigger ones, I think, would automatically come back to council or have a discussion at least between the CAO and the mayor or someone to be able to trigger that to happen. I don't know if that answers.
Go ahead, Counsel Willis.
Through the chair. I appreciate those comments, and, but this policy is not clear on that, and we assume reasonable people in both the position of mayor and CAO, which we luckily have today. But as we've seen governments change, and sometimes people aren't reasonable, and I think that having good policy makes sense, and that's one of the reasons that I'm loathe to give up council's ability to oversee the creation of policy.
So let me, let me do this. I'll take a straw poll. So how many people are happy with the policy as it is? Okay. As it is right now, or let me ask this question first. How many people feel that there needs to be, I'm going to call it failsafe, because that's the language I've been using, but additional failsafes around council oversight of administrative policy? Okay. Okay, okay, okay. So that's, that's the majority. So then, what I would do is, we'll have a back and forth with, with staff over some potential options that we can do. So I'll start with Counsel Willis's option about the consent agenda. Now, at first blush, that might seem that it's the same thing as everything still coming to council. So what are the, what would be the, you know, from an efficiency point of view, what are the administrative drawbacks to putting administrative policies on the consent agenda?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counsel Willis's idea, I would say. So consent agenda is really related to items where there's no action required. Asking council to approve or amend a policy is an action item, so it wouldn't be considered an item under the consent agenda. And under the procedure bylaw, I, as a clerk, would put it under items for consideration. Just typing as fast as I can, I, you know, the committee could recommend that the framework be amended so that all corporate and administrative policies come before council. That's one option. The other option or idea I've heard is that the policy framework be amended to direct staff to bring an annual report to council, sort of like a reporting mechanism, similarly to what, what the delegated authority bylaw states, which states that, you know, you delegate the authority to approve something to staff, but staff still report back at a regular time, providing council and the public all the instances where they've used that power. So that's another option. If the definition of administrative policy versus corporate policy needs to be cleaned up, or tightened, or narrowed, that could also be something that the committee recommends.
Okay, so I'm going to repeat those three things. So one issue which I kind of see is as distinct is tightening up the language between administrative policy and corporate policy. And then the two options that are proposed are that all administrative policies continue to come to council for approval, or there would be essentially an annual report from the CAO, which, you know, delineated all the various administrative policies that had been either changed or enacted with that delegated authority, so that council had, you know, oversight at that juncture. So let's just take those as the clerks present them right now, and we can, we can problematize them, support them, whatever. Mr. Mayor.
I have a question for the clerk for clarification. When you were speaking about it being on the consent agenda, I'm just thinking, we can extract items that we want to discuss or possibly make revisions, too. So could they not be on the consent agenda? And that would make us aware, and if we had something we wanted to discuss further, we would be able to extract it? I'm just thinking for efficiency, both at meetings and for staff. I wasn't sure if we could just do it that way. And yes, we could just receive it if there was no issues.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the mayor's question. You could, you could receive a policy, but then you're not acting on it. You're not approving it. You're not amending it. You're not rescinding it. You're not repealing it. You're just receiving it. So there's still an action required of council if it was presented to you. If it's just to receive, then you're not, you're not taking any action. You're not doing anything with it.
Counsel Willis.
Do we not already do that in the consent agenda when we receive minutes from committees and approve them, and by approving them, we are approving action? Do we not already do that?
So just reading the procedure bylaw really quickly, under the consent agenda, it states that the consent agenda includes all items that are to be received for information or contain a general or repetitive request, including staff reports for information, council minutes for adoption, committee minutes. minutes for adoption, committee minutes, communication for information, and bylaws for adoption.
Counsel Willis.
That's our procedural bylaw, so we could change it.
Absolutely.
So I have a question then. So in terms of, I mean, you know, the, the kind of, we're trying to find a way to ultimately accommodate the efficiencies that the, that the policy framework wants to outline for the CAO to be able to, to, you know, do those day-to-day stuff, that I don't think in principle, there's an argument about that. So if we, if we want to be able to accommodate that, so we're presuming then that some of those little things, say, the CAO has already done that, and so in which case, when it comes on the consent agenda, it is an item for information and can be received. But then if council had an issue to redress it, then there's other mechanisms in our procedural bylaw for them to do that, either in a notice of motion, or a direct motion to bring something back on the agenda? Would that be a way that that could be done? Like, I'm guessing, I'm trying to address that if the CAO already made the decision and, and did a policy, it came on the consent agenda as an item for information, that conforms to the current procedural bylaw, we could receive it for information. But then if, if council identified that there was a particular problem, there's other mechanisms to redress that. Is, like, how, how would you understand that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think I'm understanding it a little better now. So the idea is to delegate the authority to the CAO, then they would provide a report through the consent agenda indicating a policy has been approved under this delegated authority, and then leave it up to council to either bring it up or discuss further with the CAO, if there's any issues.
Counsel Willis.
So just building on that, because I think that's a positive move, and the other is, I like that it, by being on the consent agenda, the policies are also in the public. Because, you know, when you talk about something like a policy for how we run a program, these are policies that will touch the public in some way. So in that instance, something comes on the consent agenda, is there something in the policy framework that allows council to change that policy or revoke it?
So I'll direct the question to the clerk, but in my understanding, what that, I mean, it's, all things take time. My, my sense in that would be that council would have to request for that policy to be brought back to council on a later agenda, but I'll turn to the clerk, because that's your job.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct. In that scenario, the policy would have been approved, and then, say it's December or the summer months when council doesn't meet, and council may not get a chance to see that policy right away. And I also want to make, make it clear that, like, some, the, one of the reasons that we recommended administrative policies go, be approved by the CAO, is because sometimes they relate to IT or HR issues and procedures or policies, or guidelines, where we don't want to make that public, and there's security issues or confidentiality issues. So that's one of the reasons that this was recommended this way.
Do we note it? Counsel Proderick?
I, through you, Mr. Chair, I'm just going to ask a very naive question here. Is this something that's, like, when I, we went, I went through this as a principal in the school board, when they went to this sort of administrative policy, they called it, and with the day-to-day operations of our organization. Like, I'm just sitting here going, is this something, there's going to be like a stampede every day, if, you know what I mean? It's like, are we talking, do we have a numerical idea? Is this an ongoing thing? You know, I don't see any CAO all of a sudden coming in and changing all these things and doing it, I'm just, if it, if the goal is efficiency, then yes, there should be some kind of monitoring, I guess might be the word, but I don't know whether it changes the organization that much, depending on whether it's an administrative or a council decision, it's more of the day-to-day operations, used a good example in July, or there's a, there's a two or three weeks of a major emergency or something, you know, certain things have to be done, and I think the hump here seems to be, how do we as a council evaluate it or protect maybe the corporate policy, so that there's not a differentiation between the two?
So I'll, I'll add my two cents about, about, I think, I think there's a consensus building around the consent agenda approach. Personally, what I like about that is that, and notwithstanding that we have a great CAO currently, but, you know, decisions like this have to be made with not personalities in mind and with, with the bigger picture. I think what I like about that is it, it encourages a CAO to consult with the mayor and consult with council about policies of particular interest that should be brought on the agenda, because no CAO is going to want to enact something that then council decides to bring back and reverse. You know, it's, it's kind of a check and balance, and as Counselor Willis said earlier, things that are important in political systems. So I'll ask for some further comments, and then we can maybe try to get somewhere with this. So, Mr. Mayor.
No, I was just going to make a comment. I'm okay with that, with the understanding that, as was mentioned, there are, we do have policies that are security or personnel, they're not going to come in the public. For me personally, I look at, the more I think about it, if a policy changes, I'm okay with just an email, as, just to be aware of it, and then we can always have a discussion afterwards. But on the consent agenda, the items that are available for public viewing, that are security or something like that, that, I'm good with that, 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 that makes sure that we're all aware of it, and then we can have a discussion if needed.
Counsel Boudrick?
I am good with where the conversation has gone.
Counsel Parks?
Thank you. I, too, am pleased at where we're going with this. I, I think it covers the ability to be flexible and how the CAO deal with matters at our day-to-day operational things, but also safeguards the checks and balances that we need in place. The other thing that I was just wondering, and again, I'm not sure if this is for the clerk, or if the deputy could answer this, but the things that we were talking about with IT and human resource issues that may come, is that something that can go to closed, and be brought forward to close, so that it's duly noted somewhere? That's all, just as a protection for the township, that's all.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let the clerk answer that, but that's what I was thinking, too. I was thinking that, you know, on an issue-by-issue basis, it would usually come to closed anyway, and I'm fairly confident that it would, but I'll turn over to the clerk.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's a great point, Counsel Parks. If there's any policies identified that are, would fall under the closed meeting provisions, then it would be brought to closed session, yes.
Counsel Proderick?
I'm wondering if I could recommend, I, I just want to throw this out to my colleagues, under the recommendations, maybe add something along this lines. Four might read that the CAO provide through the consent agenda quarterly updates on any changes in administrative policy.
Counsel Willis?
Since we're in committee of the whole, could the recommendation not just be that staff take our comments and come back with a revision?
I believe the clerk actually wants clearer direction on, on this. So I, you've heard the comments, and we're all trying to work around a way to get it on the consent agenda, so have you been typing feverishly?
Yes.
Well, why don't you read us what you have?
So the first option is that the draft policy framework be amended, so that council be informed of administrative policies approved by the CAO on the next feasible council consent agenda for information.
How do people feel about that? Counsel Willis?
Perhaps just adding that if they're confidential in nature, that they're discussed and closed, because we're not making decisions about them, so it's just for information.
Is that acceptable to the clerk?
I would add that subject to provisions under the municipal act.
Yeah.
Counsel Boudrick?
So moved.
Did you want to see that on the big screen?
Sure, why don't we put that on the big screen? Yep, Counsel Willis.
I would recommend, too, that we do include that we repeal the policies identified in attachment three, so staff can get moving forward.
Oh yeah, no, I think the full recommendation's going to get put up, and I haven't even called for a secondar yet, so, just wait till we get that.
Through you, Mr. Chair, if we could do an amendment first, vote on it, and then vote on the main motion as amended?
Yep. So you're just going to get the amendment up on screen? Perfect. So the amendment is that the draft policy framework be amended, so that council be informed of administrative policies approved by the CAO on next council consent agenda for information, subject to provisions under the municipal act. That was moved by Counseler Boudrick. Do I have a secondar? Counseler Proderick, further comments on the amendment? Call the question, all those in favor? That passes. So then, we can turn to, actually, have you got it, to be able to put up on screen, the full recommendation?
This would be the motion as amended.
Okay, can I get someone to make that motion? Counseler Proderick?
I would move that the report from Corporate Services Strategy Innovation Department, dated February 25th, 2025, renew policy framework be received, that council adopt the draft corporate policy framework as outlined in attachment one, and that council repeal the policies identified in attachment three, and that the draft policy framework be amended, so that council be informed of administrative policies approved by the CAO on the next feasible council consent agenda for information, subject to provisions under the municipal act.
So moved, seconded by Counselor Willis. Comments on the motion? Or a secondar?
Thank you for your patience.
Anyone else? I'll just say again, thank you to staff. Again, this is a really good policy, it's really important, and it's going to, it's going to really guide our policy work in the future for the better. So with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. And I take a recommendation to adjourn Counseler Proderick, seconded by Counselor Parks. All those in favor? Motion is-
Okay, so we're back in the council meeting. The next item is notice of motion. Are there any notices of motion this evening? Seeing none, any direct motions being presented this evening? Seeing none. Consent agenda. Now, in the consent agenda, first off, are there any items which any council member wishes to have extracted this evening? Seeing none. Yes, oh, thank you, I was looking it up, go ahead, yeah.
The, the one, number three, Resolution GC 2025-7, that council deny the Gibson Family Healthcare Charitable Foundation.
Okay.
If we could extract, if we could extract that.
And we will also, 2025-11, and 2025-15. Ask for those to be extracted.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I would ask that council extract 15.3, so that the CAO speak to the revisions of the donations policy, and 15.5 for a number of reasons, one including the declaration of peculiar interest by Counsel Pro, Counsel Boudrick, sorry, and then a couple of amendments to the recommendations made by the committee, which I can speak to.
15.3, okay. 15.3 and 15.5 in their, in its entirety. Any other items to be extracted? Nope. Deputy Mayor?
No. I moved that all items in the consent agenda are the ones listed, dated February 25th, 2025, be approved, and that the necessary action be taken.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Ennis. Any comments from the mover? Seconder? Other members? Call the question, in favor? Motion has passed. 15.3. Get it open here. Welcome.
Your worship, if I can just speak to a brief change to the donation policy, which was considered at last committee of the whole meeting. As part of our capital campaign for the W.J. Henderson, there will be donations received, and naming rights will be provided to organizations. The policy as written did not allow any flexibility for donations. Now, this is all dependent on CRA rules and guidelines as respect to what we're able to issue a donation receipt for, and certainly, a business who is giving a donation and getting naming rights as part of the recognition of the donor would get a benefit from those naming rights, and thus is not entitled to a CRA receipt. However, there are occasions of the way, the way we do it depends. If an individual or individual family wants to donate money, and in recognition of their donation, they get on the donor board and get something named after them, they still may be entitled to a donation right. So two brief half sentences were added in the exceptions in the donation policy, to allow an exception during a council-endorsed capital campaign. Income tax receipts under the donation policy will still only be given if they are in accordance with the CRA guidelines and rules.
Okay. Counsel, any, before we go any further, I'll just ask if there's any questions that anyone has for clarification on that? None? Okay, thank you. And I would just look to the clerk. The recommendation is already set up for accepting it the way that was just discussed, right? Okay. Thank you. So with that, would someone like to put a motion on the floor? Counsel Proderick?
I would move that the minutes of February 11th, 2025, meeting of council and committee of the whole be adopted as circulated.
So moved?
And the resolutions, do you want the individual ones, or just end the resolution? End the resolutions.
End resolutions. So moved, seconded by Counsel Boudrick. Any comments from the mover? Seconder? Other members? Call the question, in favor? Motion has passed. And then to 15.5? So we can, we can poll- So we can, we can poll. We can, it would be appropriate to do 2025 dash seven first and then that way we can, that allows Counsel Boudrick to take part in all the rest of the items. So Deputy Mayor.
I move that council deny the Gibson Family Healthcare Charitable Foundation community grant application in the amount of $60,000.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Willis. Any comments from the mover? Second or other members? Call the question, all in favor? Motion has passed. Thank you. Just looking at the clerk for 11 and 15.
That's right, Mr. Mayor and to council. So I wanted to bring this up. So the grant committee met last Wednesday to, to make recommendations to these applications with respect to numbers, number seven and number 11 listed on the council agenda. So these two applications, they, they requested in-kind services of one at $2,500 and the other at similarly $2,500. However, staff gave direction during the committee meeting, staff gave advice during the committee meeting saying that there is a cap of $1,500 for in-kind services for, under the program and event stream. However, after looking through the policy, it was determined that there is no cap of $1,500 under the program and grant stream and program stream. And there is a cap under the, the in-kind free use of facility stream, which is separate from the programs and events stream. So that was a misunderstanding and I apologize to the committee members and for that misinterpretation. So, and I can let the committee members speak to this. I think the intention of the committee was to, or to approve the amounts that were initially asked, not the $1,500. So I do have those numbers prepared for council's consideration, but I'll let the committee members speak to those, to, to that matter and provide some clarity.
Thank you. Committee members, Counsel Boudrick.
I do believe that I could ask the other two members of council who are on the committee. I believe that we adjusted the, the amounts to their actual donation up to make up the difference from what we thought that rule was. So in, in the end, they're getting the, what they had asked for anyway, but I can defer to them.
Just on, just before we go any further. A question, this is unfair, it's a question to staff. The 1,500 in-kind, that would have been for probably rentals of, or use of property, which if I remember correctly, there isn't, there is a way that that in-kind fund would be shown in the books as rental of the property. If it, if they're renting, if they're renting the property and it's $2,500 worth and we're giving them in kind of 1,500, is that, do we, does that mean that the rest, they would just pay for the use of the park? Out of that then? I just, I want to make sure our bookwork is right at the end of the year.
That's right. The, um, the X, the, the funds that, so the in-kind, the difference in in-kind funds from the requested to what was recommended was added to the cash amount that the applicant would get, which would mean that they take the cash and then pay the, the difference in the rental fees.
Okay. And I'll go back to the committee members. Counsel Willis.
I agree with Counselor Boudrick and Counselor Parks was at the meeting as well. The intention of the committee was to provide the groups with the total amount they had requested. And the committee changed that allocation with the misunderstanding with the $1,500. So, so I believe that the committee would fully support that the total is the same and we go back to the splits that were originally applied for by the, the two groups. And, and it was item 11 and 15, correct?
Resolution number 25, 2025 11 and resolution number 2025 15.
Right. So if we went back to the amounts they originally applied for, I think that the, that's what the committee intended.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that addresses what my question was too then, keeps the book straight. Counsel Parks?
I just wanted to reaffirm that too, that that's my understanding too.
Okay. Thank you. So we just, we, we were just revise a resolution. Do you have something there? Makes our life good, I'll tell you. So there's the numbers? Okay. So we can take a motion? Counsel Willis.
I move Resolution G C 2025 dash 11, the council approved the Bath Gardening Club and Horticultural Society Community Grant Application in the amount of $4,948 in in-kind services of $2,590.64. And Resolution G C 2025 dash 15, that council approved Live Music Sundays Community Grant Application in the amount of $7,458.67 in in-kind services of $2,541.33.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Boudrick. Any further comments from the mover? Second or other members? Call the question, all in favor? Motion has passed. So now we just need a motion for the remaining recommendations. Could I have a motion? Counsel Willis.
I move that all other non-amended recommendations of the Community Grant Committee minutes of February 19th, 2025 be approved.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Proderick. Any comments, mover, second or other? Second or?
I would just like to thank the committee and just sort of acknowledge that with all these grant applications, the fact that several were not approved, it shows that they're taking a serious look at everything and thank them for their work.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor? Motion has passed. Announcements? Are there any announcements this evening? Counsel Boudrick.
Just the, the passing of 60-plus-year resident of Amherstview, Eldon Peters. Was a teacher, a principal, whose son-in-law, who worked for the-